You guys okay? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Visitor and public comment. Does anybody have a visitor or a public comment to make at this point? Moving forward, I have a couple of things to make comment on. First of all, just want to remind everybody that our March 12th meeting is going to be at Central High School. This will be our 15th year of doing a meeting at the high school. It's at 8:30 in the morning. 8:30 to 10:30 at Central High School. Also, coming up, we're going to be plant-- we've talked a little bit about this over months. We're going to have a council retreat coming up sometime this winter-spring. And I'm going to guess from visiting with you folks informally that a Saturday works probably better for everybody. And so, we're going to put out, I'm going to ask Karen to put out a doodle poll, and we'll take a look and, you know, because we'll try to get it on everybody's count-- your calendars are like mine. I have, I need to put things out. So, I just wanted to confirm that. Something for your calendars. A week from tonight, here in the council chambers at 6:00 PM, there will be a ceremonial naturalization ceremony for folks from our region who have recently become citizens. The way that that works is folks end up going through a tech, uh, instruction, they have to pass a test, there's interviews. Interviews are typically done in Portland, and once they pass the interview, they do the swearing-in right in Portland, but their families don't get a chance to see that. And so, we are going to host, I had a chance to present to the, uh, to the class last year, and so, we're hosting a ceremonial naturalization ceremony here at 6 o'clock, and then there'll be food to follow. So, it's open to the public. Anybody's able to attend. Other things, just to keep you informed, City Hall Day is coming up on Thursday at the Capitol. I'll be attending there and helping work with other mayors and elected officials from around the state, making sure that the legislature understands local control, property tax issues, and making sure that they understand cities. Yeah. And finally, just to keep, a final keeping informed, as you know, the mayors, managers, and commissioners meet on a regular basis. I'm bringing up the issues related to traffic and the number of crashes and things at Highway 22 and 51. It has an impact on our economic development. It has also an impact, and it's not just us. It affects the whole region, but besides the fact they get hurt, the folks that get hurt in Mush, sorry, they get hurt at there, it puts a real strain on the emergency management, emergency responders from Dallas, Salem, and our area, because so many of our folks are volunteers, that it really does put a huge strain on folks. And so, I know the other, the mayor of Dallas, and I know the folks in Salem are all so concerned about this, so we're going to start working on that and seeing what we can do. And finally, the State of the City address is coming up on February 8th. The chamber's sponsoring that, and that'll be at the Independent Cinema at noon. And we'll go. So, that's my report there. In your packets, council members, you have, on page nine, you have a appointment of the Western, of the Independence Day's commission, and we have to do this on a annual basis. And does this look okay to everybody?
Yes.
And I'm thrilled to see so many folks stepping up.
That's good. So, yes, was that, that's a motion?
Yes.
And was that, yes, a, a second?
Yes.
Okay.
Please.
Thank you. I have a motion, a second, to approve as presented. Is there a discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Mr. City Manager. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. So, just want to go through just a number of things, kind of on my list that I didn't cover last time, and some new things. The one thing I wanted to talk about is the potential flooding in Independence Landing Park. We haven't had any yet, but I just wanted to let you all know, and then if it ever starts to rise to the point where we think we're going to have some, that that park was really designed to anticipate flooding coming in. So, this is a new park. The grass is established now enough that I think if we did have some flooding there, that that would be exactly what was intended. But there's two concrete sidewalks that kind of split off and go through there. The upper one is actually at the 100-year floodplain level, and so, it was intentionally designed for the water to come up to that particular sidewalk. Shouldn't go over it, but should come fairly well close in a, in a normal 100-year flood. And then, everything below that is anticipated that it will fill up with water. What we've seen, just like in, in the other park, is velocities from the river are very low, so it really doesn't do much damage, you know, the park dust floats away and that kind of stuff. But that particular park was designed with that in mind as one of its design features. So, I just noticed over the weekend how quickly the water came up in the river, and it's not anywhere near, you know, flood stage yet, but certainly, things can change quickly. So, just wanted to let you know about that. Also, we've been talking about this a little bit, but we're kind of at the next step for our 2040 proposal selection process. We actually narrowed the pool down to two firms, and we interviewed them late last week. I'll announce the winner now, and we're going to be sending them out letters here. But it was really, really competitive, and ultimately Barney and Worth, who did our last vision plan, came out slightly on top. So, we're excited to start working on contract negotiations with them, and hopefully, we'll have them on fairly soon. It's about a year-long process, I think, is kind of looking at their schedule. We could shorten that up, but you might not get the product that you want to. About the time they get heavily into this project, school's going to be out, and lots of summer events are going to be happening, so. So, but we're excited to get this project rolling and moving on. I want to thank the three councilors that helped us through that selection process. It was very helpful to have a lot of different voices involved with that. So, I'm right, city planner recruitment, I've talked about that a few times. We're looking to hire a full-time planner to assist the city. We had interviews, again, late last week, and we have someone that we're going to be making an offer to. I can't say who or what until we actually have done that, but that's moving forward, and we're, we're excited. We had a really good quality candidate, and so, hopefully, that works out. The electronic reader board at the library is now operating. I don't know if you had a chance to go by and look at it, but it looks spectacular. It took a long time to happen, but it will be there for a long time and provide lots of opportunities to, to educate and inform. So, transportation system plan, that's continued to move along. I don't know, I don't think the city's actually done the transportation system plan through a TGM grant. I've done one or two, actually. When you're working with the state, their process is very process-intensive. So, it just takes time to go through the process, but it actually is a good process, and you end up with a good product at the end. It just takes some time. So, patience is a key. Shaun has finished up the scope, and the consultants will be selected probably in February, so the scope gets put together, gets advertised, consultants who aren't ODOT's list basically say they're interested, and then there's a scoring process to figure out who the consultant will be. Project will probably start in earnest late spring, early summer, when that actually gets underway, once the consultant's onboard. They do tend to go a little bit quickly once you actually get the consultant engaged and have the contract put in place. It just takes a little while to get there, so. But it is moving forward. Ramon is working with Merritt and the Indy Hub program to organize, organize a Latino Business Resource Fair at St. Catholic's Church. It's the last Sunday of this month, January 27th, after Mass. Merritt and the Small Business Development Commission and other business support organizations will be there with bilingual staff to engage with Latino entrepreneurs. So, a good outreach option there. Merritt is also launching an English and Spanish business development class in February's, I mean, Indy Commons. These are classes for people with business ideas and are trying to figure out what to do. So, that will be a multilingual opportunity, but still working hard to promote small businesses and businesses that are trying to figure out where they are and where they want to go. And last but not least, Sunset Meadows Park Open House. There was a great turnout, participation. Some of you might want to talk about that. But I do have an announcement, and that is, today, we learned that the City of Independence is a finalist for the community assist from the Trailblazers partnership with Moda Health. So, essentially, there's three cities that were selected to be finalists. I'm actually going to read their press release, because it's hot off the presses, and I think it's actually well-written. So, it is the ultimate execution of teamwork on the basketball court. An unselfish assist that leads directly to a teammate's ability to score. For the sixth consecutive year, the Portland Trailblazers' success in creating dozens of assists each game will fund a positive outcome for deserving Oregon community, thanks to partnership investment with Moda Health. The Moda Assist Program commits $28 per assist, doubles last season amount from the two partners, to install an all-abilities playground at the end of the season. So, that's probably going to be right around $35,000, based on the pace that they're making assists, the Trailblazers are. And it's specific, our grant application was specific to Sunset Meadows Park, so this would be a facility for that park. It goes on to say, "Interactive fan engagement will again drive the selection of the recipient community, with voting beginning February 20th, including on March 20th exclusively online." And I'm going to read it, because, you know, even though it's, it's a month away, we're going to, we need to get organized to figure out how we can get the votes in. Trailblazers.com/assists. Moda shows Oregon communities eligible parks that are finalists for the 2018-19 season for multiple nominations. Finalists each with his own defined needs are of a comparable population size and economic base. The communities are independents for Sunset Meadows Park, a park in Prineville, and a park in, in Baker City. So, big kudos go to Michelle Olson, with Sean Irvine. Michelle actually, with Sean's help, put together the whole application and submitted it, got the information in, and we're now one of three finalists with a chance to win about 35 grand for Sunset Meadows Park.
Great. That's awesome. Questions for the manager?
How many will, will be selected in that? Is it just one?
One.
Okay. There are no questions? Let us continue moving forward. Counselor Hicks, I think you have a MyNet report today.
Yeah. Last regular MyNet meeting we had was the end of November. In that, I got some assurances that Dallas is kind of moving along nicely. Sounds like there's a lot of excitement over there about the expansion, and hopefully, that stays. There is also some talk about, they're really struggling with how to, how to deal with cable, and there's a talk about maybe bringing along this easy video app, which has kind of tried to make them move away from set-top boxes, and where your smart TV, or your Roku, or Amazon Fire Stick would have an app-like program for MyNet, which you would get your, get your video from, which would save a lot in repairing, you know, refurbishing set-top boxes and taking care of all of that. So, that's, that's one way getting, I don't know quite when the adoption would be, but moving, moving customers towards that. We did get an update on the GPON conversion, which is the gigabit speed conversion we're doing, and I've been told it's, it's ahead of schedule so far. It's about, I think originally it was supposed to take about five years. They're expecting it to finish about a year early, and at current estimates, over $700,000 under budget, from what it was originally slated as. At the end of the November meeting, one of the board members brought up the idea of bonuses for MyNet employees related to the Dallas project. We had rescheduled the meeting mid-December to discuss that, and a majority of the board had decided to give them those bonuses. And that's about it.
Counselors, any questions for?
Thank you. I appreciate the really complete report, and thank you. I'll be interested in hearing more about the, the app and
Yeah.
All, all those wonderful things that I should be able to do with my TV, but I don't know yet.
I can, I can come give it there.
There you go. That's great.
Tutorial.
Counselor Martin Willis, you, I think you have Parks and Recreation and also Planning Commission.
I do, and they're, yeah, both going to be short and sweet.
Okay.
Parks and Rec did not have an official meeting on the 17th. Instead, they had the Sunset Meadows Planning Meeting over at Mountain Fur, seeking, as we often do, community input as to what that park will look like. So, results pending. And then, moving on to Planning Commission, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, because later in our meeting today, we'll be dealing with much the same issues. But in their December 10th meeting, approved several amendments to the Development Code outlined in, in tonight's meeting for LA 03 2018, that, like I said, that'll be heard here, and the Planning Commission recommends approval to that code as amended at the Planning Commission meeting. And then, there's also a code interpretation that we'll be dealing with to include offices in our IL zone, light industrial. So, again, recommended for our approval as well. And then, January 10th, Planning Commission had a Planning Commission training. So, that's kind of where they are in relation to us.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay. We're hearing, following, moving forward with presentations. I think we have a staff presentation from Ramon Martinez. Good evening. I don't know if I'm officially able to say congratulations on your selection for your athletic efforts, re-enabled to represent the U.S. in duathlon?
Uh, yes.
That's biking and running. And so, and you will be competing for the U.S. in September, is it?
Yes.
And it's, that's in Switzerland?
Yes.
Come again?
Zofingen.
Okay. Great. Well, so anyway, congratulations.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
I didn't want to miss the, the opportunity, because I know how hard you, how you, hard you've worked, and also, what it takes to represent the United States internationally. Go on with your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I'm excited to present a pretty fun effort. We are whipping together, this is in collaboration with the Community Services Consortium. Both cities are helping move this effort forward. The Central School District, Western Oregon University, the Gate Youth Foundation, getting community input. And this is being called Youth Mic, which stands for Monmouth Independence Council, and we hope that this can provide a meaningful opportunity for youth to be involved in both communities, and so, they can provide, this is an avenue, or we can provide a platform for youth to be vocal about their ideas and their concerns that are affecting them in their communities, and also, this can establish a, an avenue for community leaders to speak directly with youth. And we're really excited about providing this opportunity for youth, and current, right now, we have it set as for youth for 16 to 24, and we decided on that time range, that age range, because that's, Community Services Consortium, that is the age range that they work with, so we decided we're going to go with that age range. And ultimately, we want to be able to make, we want to cast the biggest net possible to provide this opportunity for youth in Independence and in Monmouth. So, with that is, the ultimate idea is, so we can have rich youth engagement, and also recognizing that they're, they are our future leaders. So, right now, we are working to provide an information night that will be held on February 28th at Indy Commons. That'll be at 5:30, and we, we want to be able to talk more in-depth with the potential, with youth who are interested in being on this council, and also, we want to be able to make this an, you have a question? Oh, I think, yes. We want to be able to be this, we want this to be a meaningful information night, because, well, we are working to bring down a youth commission group, or youth leadership group from Portland, to come down and speak directly with our youth, and they are the Multnomah Youth Commission, and they've been around since the mid-'90s. So, they are a very well-established youth leadership group, and they do their work at, not only at the city level, but also at the county level. And so, I got the ball rolling with their coordinator, and things are looking good about them making down, making a visit for the 28th. And also, invitations have been sent out to our county commissioners, and the invitation is definitely open to you all, if you want to come down and speak to potential youth of this group, and just talk, speak to the importance of being involved in your communities. And so, we are making a pretty comprehensive recruitment, if you will, or outreach, and all our materials are in a bilingual format, and also, our surveys, if you see at the very bottom, we're, we're collecting information to really kind of try to get an idea of what issues are important to our youth. But that survey as well is available in Spanish, as well as in English, and we just want to be able to get a, get a kind of a pulse or a sense of what is important for youth in our communities. And also, at this information night, there'll be UCBC, so hopefully, that will be a fun drop for our youth, and, oh, so, it's pretty exciting, too, as, as we kind of work to develop this effort, that we, we were getting a lot of external interest. And so, one just recent, just for example, recently, with the Polk 4-H program, they are, they brought to our attention of this, really, this is a great opportunity for youth to participate in a youth, it's called, so, Youth Voices and Actions Conference, that will be held in March, and that will be held in Salem. And we already, we, we've already kind of got into talks about trying, them providing multiple $250 scholarships to participate in this three-day event. So, we really want to be able to keep that idea afloat, and, and also, we want to be able to expose youth to such opportunities that are not too far away. And also, I'll be, as Tom noted, this Sunday, I'll be over at St. Patrick's. Also, be doing a couple of community announcements, and I'll also be making a bilingual announcement for the Youth Mic Information Night, and just generally talking about Youth Mic in general. Okay, I'll draw the line there at this point. If you guys have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Questions?
I have one.
Please do.
So, and I see at the bottom, you're asking them to complete the survey. Is there any kind of registration that they need to do in addition to that? I have some youth in my brain.
Okay. Yeah, we have our, our Facebook is up and running, and you can find the event there. You can find the information, the Facebook URL at the very bottom, and through there, you can be able to RSVP
Okay.
To the event. And, but also, it'd be preferred if youth, that they'd complete the survey prior to attending, but we will also have opportunities for the youth to complete the surveys at the information night.
Okay. I'll get that to them. Thank you.
Please.
Is there anybody in Monmouth City government that's assisting you with this, or is this pretty much an independence?
Oh, so, which I mentioned really quickly towards the beginning, but both Tom and the city manager Scott McClure are part of this planning effort. They're, they're in the loop, and, but also, I'm, would, it'd be great for city council members from Monmouth to attend this information night as well, send out a couple invites there, but if you all, with your connections, it'd be great if you can help strengthen the invitation, if you have the opportunity.
Can you make a presentation to the Monmouth City Council?
Yeah, I think, that'd be, we're trying to do, we're trying to be involved out there as much as possible, and for instance, last week, we were at Western Oregon University for, we had a table talking about Youth Mic, and so, talking to the students there and whatnot, but, but it'd be, I think something like having a mini presentation over at Monmouth City Council would be good if they would allow me to, maybe? Or I can get a Monmouth friend and hopefully relay that same kind of announcement.
Great. Additional questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's move on to new business. We have Development Code text amendments.
Wait, do we?
And just in case anybody wants to.
This is what that looks like if you have printed.
You got the printed version.
741 pages.
That's why they didn't put, hand it all up. Yeah. That's why it was all electronic. Good evening.
Good evening. I believe you have a legislative
Hearing that I, are we ready? Okay.
Sure.
This evening, we have a public hearing on legislative amendment 032018 to consider amendments to the Independence Development Code. The city council will make a final decision based on the complete record, including the testimony received at tonight's public hearing. These proceedings will be recorded. This hearing will be held in accordance with the land use procedures required by the city and the state of Oregon. This is a type four legislative procedure. At the beginning of the public hearing tonight, staff will identify the applicable substantive criteria from the city's comprehensive plans and/or state of Oregon statewide planning goals. For anyone wishing to speak, we're asking you to use the speaker cards that are provided. When called upon to speak, you will be recognized by me, and you must state your name and address for the record. Before we begin, does any councilor wish to declare an actual or potential conflict of interest in this matter? I don't think anybody has one. I don't think so. Okay. I don't think so. Okay. So, I can move, so I'm going to open the hearing. I now open the public hearing for LA 032018, and can we have the staff report?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Zach Pell's city planner. We have a huge package of code amendments in front of you tonight, as you've noticed. I think we can boil this down into a pretty simple discussion. I want to start by reminding you of where we were last summer, or I guess just this past summer, around June and July of this year, when we, we talked about sort of, kind of the efficiency that we could gain by packaging code amendments up into a single, a single package and run them in front of you, rather than doing these kind of piecemeal proposals and continually updating our code that way. So, that is sort of why we're, we're sitting with this bulky package of amendments that are sort of unrelated. Related to that is that, and this is something where the planning department and city staff is going to continue to manage as we go forward, is this docket of potential code amendments. So, you might remember, we talked about, as, as potential fixes to the code are brought to staff's attention, either, either from you all, the planning commission, other appointed officials, city staff, members of the public, we'll keep track of those amendments in a, in a master list, and once, once a year, and I think ideally, it makes sense to do it around budgeting time, we can go through that list and see where we have resources to tackle some of those important code amendments. We can bring them in front of you to initiate, and then we can move that package forward in kind of a streamlined fashion. So, that's what we're doing here. This is kind of, this is our first attempt at it, so it's, it's maybe a little bit more clunky than I hope it goes in the future, but nonetheless, that's, that's, that's kind of the background for this package. There, so basically, the, the purpose behind these eight discrete code amendments is to fix inconsistencies throughout the code, fix grammatical errors, et cetera. Expand the use of residential property, namely, we wanted to permit vinyl fencing was one of the things. There's also a requirement that we have 15-foot utility easements on all new, newly-created lots, which we wanted to get rid of, that's unnecessary. And then, we want to refine some of the standards that apply in the city's commercial zones. So, that's, those are kind of the overarching purpose behind, behind these eight discrete amendments that are in your package today. Just for some background and some procedural information, as I mentioned earlier, you all approved this package, sort of, kind of the initiation of this package in July of 2018. We sent notice to the local newspaper on October 17th of 2018. We also sent notice to the Oregon State Department of Land Conservation and Development 35 days prior to these hearings. That's a state, state requirement for any text amendment to our zoning ordinance. We provided a, you might recall that we provided a really similar summary of what you're seeing tonight to you all on September 25th, and then we had a, as Counselor Martin Willis pointed out, we had a public hearing with the Planning Commission on December 10th. The Planning Commission voted to approve, or to recommend that you all approve this package of amendments with, with one slight tweak, and that has to do with this modification to the drive-through definition that we'll talk about a little bit later, and that is included in your package tonight. So, at tonight's, tonight's meeting, you are hearing the recommendation from the Planning Commission, and you can approve, approve with modifications, or deny that, that recommendation to approve. to approve. So real quickly, I mentioned before, we've got eight kind of discrete amendments, and I'm just going to quickly go through the, kind of a high-level view of what those things would do. One of the, the big thing, and this is in Appendix A, the first 400 pages or so of your packet, is just a series of fixes to various grammatical and other inconsistencies throughout the code. That's what that is. Just stepping back for one second, I think what we'd like to do going forward is separate that housekeeping set of amendments from the other amendments. We did it this time, just, just to kind of get caught up, but we won't do that in the future. We know it's a, it's a big, kind of time-consuming process for you all to review, and we'll try to separate that out in a separate housekeeping set of amendments. The second thing we want to do is remove the notice and public comment requirements for certain staff-level decisions, and those specific decisions include home occupation permits, lot line adjustments, and sign permits. In staff's opinion, those are decisions that include very clear and very objective standards for which notice and public comment period is not necessary. The third amendment that we're proposing is to formally allow hotels and lodging uses in our, in our, the city's primary commercial district, which our code does not explicitly allow. It's the intent, in talking with members of the committee that formed this new MUPC district, that it was the city's intent to include hotels as a permitted use in the zone, but it was erroneously left out, and so we just want to make that fixed to make it explicit that hotels are allowed. I think I've got a map here just showing, this is, this is a zoomed-in map showing the city's zoning, just to give you an idea of what those MUPC, and again, that's the city's kind of main commercial zoning district there, in the kind of that brick-red color. And this is what we're talking about when we say we want to allow hotels in this MUPC zone. That's, that's all those red, red-colored properties shown on that map. And then the fourth, the fourth one would be to, so we have a requirement in the code that there be a walkway between the front door of new homes and the sidewalk. And the staff has interpreted, interpreted this standard for the last two years to say that where there is a driveway, a vehicle driveway nearby, that front entrance, that that driveway may be used in lieu of this separate walkway, so that we don't have just this additional concrete walkway in front. But this would make that explicit if you choose to do so. There's a few more things. We're looking to, like I mentioned before, remove the requirement for a 15-foot perimeter utility easement on all new lots. This is something that a lot of zoning ordinances had a while back, and it's just kind of like a blanket placeholder, I guess, for situations where the city ever decided to install public utilities. So for, for a subdivision, they would have a 15-foot public utility easement around all four sides of a new lot that could not be built over or used for any other purpose besides potential future public utilities. And that's not really necessary anymore. We know at the time of subdivisions where those utilities are going, and if, if new public utilities are needed later on, we can work with property owners to obtain those easements. That's obviously not quite as easy if they're already there, but for new subdivisions, we have a good idea of where they go. What essentially this additional 15-foot utility easement does is it acts as a, as a setback, really. So we've got, I guess, a simple example is where, zones where we've got a five-foot side yard setback and a 15-foot utility easement on that setback. The setback is essentially 15 feet, so people can't build in that additional 10 feet that their setback doesn't, doesn't regulate. And so we'd be getting rid of that and just relying on the setbacks to, to provide that separation between structures on adjacent properties. One of the other things we'll be doing with this is permitting vinyl fences. We've talked about this a little bit in the past, but beginning in 2012, the city enacted a prohibition on vinyl fences, and that, this would remove that. A couple more things we're looking to do, amend the minimum lot coverage standard for MUPC zone properties that are outside of the downtown overlay district. And so here's the map again, showing those MUPC zone properties, and the downtown overlay district is just this kind of central business district. I've got a little arrow pointing to it on the map up here. The reason we want to remove this lot coverage minimum, so the lot coverage minimum is 50%, so for all MUPC zone properties throughout the city, new buildings on these lots must consume at least 50% of the total lot area. That's, that's what the standards say. So the problem, the problem with this outside of the downtown overlay is that there are some pretty large parcels that it really doesn't make sense to have a new building consume 50% of those larger parcels. On top of that, it's very often the case that the parking requirement is a function of the area of the building itself, and so the larger the building gets, the more parking is needed, and there gets a point where you can't supply parking and meet that lot coverage standard without doing some sort of underground parking or parking structure or something like that, which is not feasible. So what we're proposing is to just remove that minimum lot coverage standard for all those MUPC zone properties that are outside of the downtown overlay. That, that would still apply in, in the downtown overlay district where the density is, is really desired, but would not apply outside of that area. The last thing is to amend the definition for drive-throughs to allow curbside pickup. I think we talked about this in September. Curbside pickup is where you order a coffee or some similar product via an app or call-in, and there is a small parking area or waiting area on the premise of that, that commercial property where you can park, and then an employee of the business walks your, your product out to you. And so our current definition for drive-through says, drive-throughs are not allowed in the downtown overlay district, and that includes any, any operation where a patron remains in their car while they're being provided a good or service. And so we're just tweaking that definition to not, I guess, not account for this, this curbside pickup type of, type of situation. So the applicable criteria for this entire package of amendments are found in Independence Development Codes, subchapters 11, 12, and then in the Independence Comprehensive Plan in Chapter 7, which pertains to kind of economic development, goals and policies, Chapter 10, which talks about land use goals and policies, and Chapter 12, which talks about citizen involvement goals and policies. And staff's response to those applicable criteria are in the report. That was included in your package. As I mentioned earlier, on December 10th, the planning commission voted to recommend approval with one tweak, and that tweak was that we clarify that the parking needed for this curbside pickup must be, must be off-street, must be off-street parking, and has to be parking that's in addition to the parking that's required for the commercial use already. So if there is a, just as an example, if there's a coffee shop that requires five parking spaces off-site, if they want to have curbside pickup, these curbside pickup spaces have to be in addition to those five spaces. We've included a provision in, in this, this amendment that allows nearby commercial property owners to share some of their parking area to accommodate this curbside use if they want to. They just have to enter into like a joint agreement that says they agree to share these parking spaces, so that's, that's also an option. So that makes it a little more possible, I think, for some of these downtown businesses that might desire to have, to have this kind of service, where they might not have any off-street parking available, but, but their, but their neighbors do. So that's it, that's the, that's the bulk of it. Now, if you have specific questions, we can, we can dive into those, or however you'd like to do it.
Questions for staff this evening?
I have a couple of notes.
Please do.
So just to avoid corrections down the road for Scrivener's errors. I did notice that in Exhibit A, on pages 10 and 11, I think it's the word "days" was omitted. Get to page 10. And it's in the, the new text, and I think on page 11, it was just a cut-and-paste error. So at the top of page 10, no, go away. Within 180 of receipt of staff's completeness determination, it's the new language in blue, I'm assuming that the word "days" should be in there, and figured we could get that corrected now, rather than down the road.
Yes, thank you. I noticed, just for your information, there are, kind of ironically, there are several grammatical errors that remain in that Exhibit A. If you, if you vote to move forward to recommend that staff prepare an ordinance, we will go back through that another couple, couple times to clean up those, those errors.
Language errors. And, and that was actually, one of my questions is, are we going to, tonight, we're just, we, we may move to, move the process forward, so you'll come back with a finished copy that we can, you know, review and make sure that, yes.
Exactly, right. So what we're asking tonight, if, if, if this is your desire, is to direct us to prepare that ordinance that you could, you could actually adopt, and this would be at your next meeting, and that's February 12th, I believe.
Okay. My, I'm full of questions tonight, sorry. In Exhibit E, regarding the, the 15-foot easement, so would existing easements be abandoned?
Nope, nope. This would be for any new subdivision. So we'd just be removing that requirement from our subdivision chapter, so going forward, any new subdivision would not be subject to that same standard.
Okay. And then on the curbside pickup, you answered my initial question. So I guess I'm thinking about things like Brew, whose only parking is the C Street going down to the park and then up on the main roads. They would be ineligible for curbside pickup.
Right.
Because they don't.
Right. Yeah, unless they could find a creative way to.
Run somebody down the hill to the back of the building.
Right, right. So probably, yeah, they probably wouldn't be able to take advantage of that.
Because I was thinking of like that in the Italian restaurant, that they have some space in that, they might be able to work something out, so, okay. Thank you.
You know, thank you. I think one thing just to keep in mind, since this is a brand-new thing for us, is that if, if this is something you wish to move forward, you know, there's, there's, there's no, there's no reason we couldn't kind of just try it out for a year or two, see how it goes, and make, make tweaks along the way. If it turns out that maybe we want to entertain some limited on-street parking for this, we can look at that, but, but right now, we're thinking, kind of, on-street parking is not such a premium that we wanted to, to not start with that.
Okay. And then, can we chat a little bit about driveways as walkways?
Yeah.
Just because we, we've really gone to, to great lengths, I think, particularly with our, with our new residential codes, to make home fronts much more appealing from the curb, and to get rid of snout garages and that kind of thing. So I guess I'm questioning if you have a garage that's not oriented right next to the front door, then how does that then act as a walkway to the front door?
Sure. So what, what we're proposing, to kind of clarify this, is where there's a driveway within 20 feet of the front door, that driveway may be used to meet this walkway requirement. If it's further away than that, it can't, and you have to have a separate dedicated pedestrian-only walkway.
So would there be no, since we're on that subject, would there be no concrete walkway to the driveway? It would just be, for instance, the front door, and then maybe lawn, and then over here's the driveway?
Right, so there would be, there would be a paved connection between the driveway and the front door.
Okay.
Correct. Yeah. And then, again, assuming, well, the driveway has to be paved also, so there's a transition from the, the public sidewalk to the paved driveway, to this paved connection between the driveway and the front door.
So it's paved all the way to the front door.
So we're still looking at that awkward up-the-driveway, do the L, and then up to the door.
Yep. So, right. I mean, it does, it does establish that we do not have this standalone pedestrian connection from the front door directly to the sidewalk.
Oh, yeah. Just so I'm not reading this wrong, nobody spoke out against the, bringing back vinyl fencing.
Nope, I didn't, I didn't receive any comments.
Okay.
Counselor, take us. I see you have a notepad.
I do. Although she, she got a few of those already.
So in the first exhibit, under zoning, the zone, zone definitions, section 10.025, it looks like we're eliminating downtown overlay in that. It's crossed out.
Let me pull that up. That's in Exhibit A.
Exhibit A, section 10.025. Yeah, so that, that was my question, is it? Because it is, it is referenced in several areas, so.
It's in Chapter 33 now. It's mixed due to pedestrian-friendly commercial zone and downtown overlay.
Okay, so then it's defined in there sufficiently. Yeah, maybe, maybe it is. And it, and it doesn't need to be with the other zoning designations?
So, yeah, so.
Counselor, take us to the H number.
So here, so see.
Not, not on mic. Copy, it's Subchapter 10. Yeah, right there.
So see this one right here? It's got a child's name.
Karen, can you scroll up to the, to the main heading there? Thank you.
The big book.
Yeah, to be honest, I'm looking at it now, I don't think we should remove that. So it's an overlay, it's an overlay district. It's included in as.
Chapter 9, yeah, it's in 33.
Right, it is. All the standards for it are contained in Chapter 33. So it's not a standalone overlay chapter, as, as is the airport safety compatibility overlay, but nonetheless, it's a, it is a, it is a zoning district. So really, I think, I think we should leave it in there.
Okay. And then, and it was a little, it was a little, and I actually sent an email to our city manager, because I wanted to see that finished copy, so I could kind of review what was actually being put down, and of course, he informed me, there's going to, you know, have to cut down several trees to, to get that to me, but. But I was a little unclear on some of the definitions. For, for instance, in, I think it's the first one again, under Subchapter 13, the definitions, daycare center really didn't have a definition. It did in a, in one of the other exhibits, but, you know, that it was a little unclear what, what, what we're doing with that. And also nursery, I think, in one, that we're crossing out, I think we were referring to, back to daycare, which wasn't quite correct, and then I saw it in another one, where it's actually referring to an agricultural nursery, type nursery. So I just wanted clarification on that, and, and that's, that's really why I was asking about having a final copy to see, because I was confused.
Sure. So we spent, and I, just, just for clarification, I apologize, my memory's a little foggy on some of, some of the amendments and exhibits.
You don't have this memorized?
There's, there's a lot of them, and this was, this was something that the city's been working on for about the last two years, and we had an internal group working on them. So there's a lot of things in here that, yeah, I'm not, I don't have memorized correct. We did spend a lot of time on the definitions, kind of updating them. There's, there's some, there's some terms in there that aren't really commonly used anymore, or that may not be appropriate anymore, that we kind of tried to get rid of. A lot of terms we took out because they're not used in the, in the text of the zoning ordinance, so we didn't want to have a definition where that term isn't used. And we wanted to make sure also that all the terms that are defined are consistent with those, those uses as listed in the Development Code. So that's really what we intend to do, so if we, if we remove daycare center, or it looks like here, we've got some cleaning up to do still, we're adding a definition, this would be a definition, that's, we're trying to get consistent with this, the state building department definition for daycare center.
Additional questions?
I think that's all I really have.
Okay. All righty. I don't see anybody else asking any questions at this point. And I may have some when we get to deliberation. Is that okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak related to this matter? Anybody jumping up, wanting to speak on this matter? Okay. Okay. Since I don't see anybody else interested in speaking, I'm going to close the public hearing, and we're going to go into deliberation. And I have a question for staff right now, since we're now in deliberation. So since there is a couple of minor changes here, can we still go ahead and, essentially, we can approve this and make sure that these details are hammered out in the final, is, I'm just, I'm looking for assurance, trying to keep it moving forward, but I want to make sure that we get, that we can get where we need to be. Does that make sense?
Yeah, again, you will have another bite at this on February 12th to look through that ordinance in detail. If there is anything in there that we have not captured, we've heard from you that we've got some cleaning up to do with, especially with regard to that Exhibit A. We know there's some mistakes that need to be cleaned up in there, we'll do that, and then we'll take another look through these other exhibits to clean those up as well. Yeah, so on February 12th, you'll see the actual ordinance, this will all be in ordinance form. Just one other point to make, the reason we have the full text of each of these chapters is that's kind of the advice we've been given from our city attorney, that when we amend the development code, we want to amend the entire chapter together, so we don't miss any components or not correctly legally adopt those things. So yes, you'll have another chance to see that text.
So, counsel, what would you like to do? We are in discussion and deliberation, and would you feel comfortable? Thoughts?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, yes, I would like to keep the process moving forward, and I guess as long as we do have the opportunity in February for that final look, that, are you ready for a motion?
From somebody.
Okay, that I would move to adopt the findings in support of the proposed development code amendments, File Number LA032018, amending the code's subchapters as recommended in the staff report. Did we have any modifications?
Oh, they're going to catch all those.
Okay, I'm just trying to...
They're going to catch everything.
In the staff report, and direct staff to prepare an ordinance for council passage.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Now we're in discussion. You folks are clear what we need? Okay, everybody okay there?
And we're clear that we're not passing an ordinance tonight.
We're not passing an ordinance tonight. We're just, we're moving it forward, but we will have the opportunity to see the final official 700 pages. And I, yeah, and we'll have that opportunity to look that over. Is that okay with everybody? Is everybody feeling okay? Did you wish to add something?
I'll just mention that if you guys do find something in between now and then, you know, you can let us know, and we will have another staff report, and we could point those items out, and you could do an amendment or just adopt those.
Right.
This is a last opportunity here.
Right. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, moving forward. As we all know, we have a council vacancy, and I haven't seen the applications, I know we have four applications here. What I'd like to do is talk for a moment, have us talk a little bit about the process before we take a look at the applications. What we have done historically, and I think we alluded to last time, is that we'll figure out what our process is here, and then we'll get the applications, we'll all take time to look at them, and what's worked before, and I want to see if it would work again, is that within, we'll set a timeline and let Karen know who your top people you want to interview are, and then she'll let the people know, and then we'd interview them before the next, or associated with the next council meeting. Does that seem like a reasonable approach? Okay?
If I recall, we had a work session before a council meeting, is the way we did it?
Would that work for people? So we started a council meeting at 6:30. If we started it an hour, hour, an hour and a bit ahead of time, would that work for people? Is that okay for you? Is everybody, is that okay? So we looked at about a 5:15 or 5:30, okay? All right, is that okay with staff? Can we do that?
And so at the work session, you will be...
The work, we would be doing the interviews, is what it would be. Yeah, and so I'm not sure if it would legally be a work session, be an interview session. And people want to, what I'm thinking is that if we pick the top two, if everybody puts in their top two, but there's going to, and then we'll just sort out and see what the natural break is. Does that sound okay with everybody?
Yes.
And then we have, we took a look, and when should, well, when should we have these all? When would you like...
When's the deadline?
Well, everybody's applied, it's applied, it's all, it's already in.
With only four, I don't need as much time as last time.
Right, and so when, do we want to have it done by the end of the week? That would let people have a full week to know. Is that okay?
Yeah.
So let's plan by close of business on Friday? Is that okay with staff? Okay, and you get your, put in your top two, and staff and I'll take, you know, see what that looks like, and we'll make sure that Counselor Morton gets the same information with the same, so that she knows, and...
Is that going to be, work for her?
I, do you recall...
I thought she said she would be checking email.
Yeah. Well, we'll figure, we'll find a way. Okay. And then we'll have an early session to interview the candidates, and we'll go from there. Does that sound okay with everybody?
Yes.
All righty. So our city recorder will hand out the folders. Should we just do announcements now, and then you can hand out folders before we go home? Is that okay? Because I don't know who's on, do you folks have announcements this evening?
Hello, it's not here.
That's great. Okay, if there is nothing else, you know, we've been the recipients of some shorter meetings for a while, and it's nice to balance out life a little bit, and so, because I know we have some things coming up. So if someone would like to send us, to make us done...
Move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you very much. Karen will hand out the...